All right, thank you, everybody. Planning Board Meeting Lonnie's on vacation, I believe. And I thought Mary was gonna be in, but I don't think she's called in, so I'm not sure what's going on there. But like to start the meeting with a pledge allegiance, if we could. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. It's difficult hearing the feedback. It's. I feel like I'm stuttering, but. Couple of announcements. Melissa has taken the role as the recording secretary. She's recording for us and you're doing some other boards in, in the town, Melissa?
Yeah, I'm doing the finance planning.
Okay, yeah. Excellent. All right, good. So she is now a town employee and she is the recording secretary for us, taking place for Mary. I am also leaving the board. I, I'm building a house in Plymouth and I had just gotten an offer for my house last night that we agreed upon. So I'm closing on the 30th and not being a resident of the town after the 30th, I am not eligible to be an elected official.
Congratulations, though.
Thank you. No, thank you. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's very exciting. Put my house on the market on Monday. We had open houses on Saturday and Sunday. Next thing you know, I had four offers last night and we went through them, so. Pretty exciting time, pretty nerve wracking as well. So, but downsizing, getting something a little easier, so. Pretty excited about it, but I'll probably have to live with an in-law for a short period of time until the house is ready, but that's my cross to bear. So what I'm gonna propose we do is I'm gonna participate in the meetings. But Adam, I'm gonna have you run the meeting, more or less. You know, that way, if you need any help during the meeting, I'm here to help as long as I can do it. I got a couple of announcements that I'll read a little bit later. That I did get from Melissa. And I also have a couple of the applications that came in that are on the screen. But what I'll do is we'll kind of just walk through it. So I'll let you run the meeting. I'll read some of these things as, you know, almost like being secretary and reading through some of the applications and what they mean. And then you'll call for votes and discussions and whatnot. So we'll just try to be comfortable with that.
That works.
So with that being said. It's cold, but here you go.
I don't have anything printed out for tonight, so.
Okay.
I just have, I wasn't planning on this, you know.
No, I know.
And I have to work in an hour, so it is, so I was just kind of going with the flow, so.
I know, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through it. I'm gonna step through it and help you with it, but I'm gonna have, you're gonna be the acting chair for the night, cuz you're, you're the vice chair, but I'm gonna have you as the acting chair tonight. So it's your meeting and I'm just gonna kind of walk you through some of what we've got.
Okay.
Melissa, I don't think there is any agenda for anybody coming before the board tonight. So it's just anybody who would come in early. Again, Melissa, just so you're familiar, you know, usually the first 15 minutes or so is open for general business, so. Typically, when we're in the town hall, people can just walk up, say, hey, you know, I've got a question about a Form A. I've got a question about, you know, something that might be buildable and not buildable, whatever it may be. I mean, sometimes it's, it's a developer like Richard Rosen coming in just to say, hey, by the way, I'm planning to do this. And, and it's not always something that we have to provide answers for, but sometimes it's just a courtesy to tell us what's going on. And, you know, we hear, hear what's going on. Sometimes it's Form As that need to be filed. There's a lot of things that can happen, but those are the things that are not on the agenda. So we leave time for that early on in the meeting. Little bit more difficult with the Zoom meeting. Cuz they need to know we're having it, they need to have an invite. So that stuff that I call Gaby, make, be able to call you up or call Mary until he knows to call you. And I say, hey, I, I just want to present something to the board. I'm really not on the agenda. Is there any way I can get on in the next meeting? And you kind of just set something up where, hey, yeah, the first 15 minutes, here's the invite, you know, come talk to us. So we can easily get through stuff like that. So I guess what I'll do is I'll, I'll read these announcements. If that's okay, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
So the first one's from the Office of the Town Clerk. Dated October 6th, to all departments, it's by law approval. This is to notify you that the Attorney General has approved general bylaw adopted under Article Number Four and Article Number Thirty Five of the warrant for the Whitman Annual Town Meeting that convened on July 27, 2020. I have attached a copy of the approved bylaws, which should be placed in your office copy of the Whitman Bylaw Book. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Don M. Varley. Okay. The town voted unanimously to amend the town departmental revolving funds by law by adding to Section Five Authorized Revolving Funds. A, revolving funds, street lighting receipts. B, Department Board Committee Agency or Officer Authorized to Spend from Fund, Street Lighting. C, fees charged or other receipts credited to fund fees for lighting and insurance claims. D, program or activity expenses payable from fund expenditures related to street lighting. E, restrictions or conditions on expenses payable from fund, none. F, other requirements slash reports, none. Fiscal year, fiscal year 2021 and subsequent years. And to limit spending from this account to $7,000 annually or take other action relative thereto proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Voted on July 27th, Annual Town Meeting, Article Four, approved by the Attorney General on October 1, 2020, effective date October 7, 2020. And it was notarized by Don Varley. And there's more. The town voted the majority to amend Article XX of the Town's general bylaws inserting after Section 4B the following sections. Section Five, no person shall be appointed to or serve on any town board, commission or committee unless such person resides in the town or establishes and maintains residency within the town within one year of appointment. Any person serving as a member of a board, commission or committee who during the term of office for which they, which appointed ceased to be a resident of the town, this is ironic, shall immediately be deemed to have vacated such membership. The provisions of the bylaw shall not apply to ex-official members or non-voting members. Any non-resident member of a board, commission or committee holding such membership at time this bylaw becomes effective shall be exempt until expiration of the member's current term, were to take any action relative thereto proposed by this selectman. Voted on July 27, 2020, Annual Town Meeting, Article Thirty Five, approved by the Attorney General on October 1, 2020, effective date October 7, 2020, notarized by Don Varley. So these will go into the bylaws. Now, what will end up happening with this as well? Well, the board will get a memo. Or they may get a memo. Right now, this is just being inserted into the book so that when these items come up, you, you go into the book, you see that there's a supplement, you're able to read it and utilize it. But there'll be an update to the bylaws. And the planning board is responsible to basically republish the bylaws. So there'll, there'll be a request coming that they'll ask that we do that. And you use the money from the revolving fund to update the bylaws. So that's something to keep in mind, maybe coming down the road. The revolving account is the account that we use. Developers pay fees, you know, Form As, all these things that we collect fees for goes into a revolving account. Difference is, is a subdivision, the developer would go into an engineering account. We track that money, but it's all in one bucket of money. But we track what they have in there so that they keep a balance of $2,000 minimum while we're doing reviews of their developments. But all the other fees that go in, they stay in the, the bank account for us to be able to utilize when we need to. We do have budgets for expenditures and salaries and whatnot, but the revolving account works for things like this. Next notice, Planning Board of Appeals, Town of Whitman Public Hearing. The Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 26, 2020, at 7:00 PM on the line, online via video conferencing on petition of Stephen Perkins and Colleen Mylett for a special permit from Section 6666 for a proposed accessory apartment for the property located at 16 Holly Ridge Drive. In order to receive instructions for viewing the, or participating remotely in this hearing by computer or telephone access, and it's a link, and register for the hearing. Please note this meeting will be held remotely in accordance with Governor Baker's March 20, March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting laws and members of the public will not be able to physically attend the meeting. John Goldrosen Chairman, October 8th and 15th of 2020. And there's another, just repeating to another case right below it. Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 26th at 7:30, online via video conference on petitioning Angelina Jocelyn for variance of Section 665, her proposed addition, which doesn't meet side setback requirements for the property located at Two O Colony Way. And again, in order to receive instructions is a link for them to register. And it also talks about Governor Baker's open meeting laws. So Holly Ridge, I don't recall us reviewing, but I, I know we did review Old Colony and we did provide recommendation for either, no recommendation or we had a vote regarding what we thought should be done on that particular one. Yep.
We did do Holly Ridge on September 8th.
We did, okay. Trying to remember that one.
You were away.
Okay, that would explain it. Okay, thank you. Here's the last one. It's Planning Board Appeal, Board of Appeals will hold public hearing on Monday, October 26th at eight o'clock PM, online via video conferencing on petition of Maureen Foley for a variance of Section 665 and site plan approval from Section 772 to raise an existing building and build a retail store on the property located on 864 Bedford Street. Again, it gives a link for registering to attend the meeting as well as the governor's order of March 12th for suspending certain things regarding open meeting laws. So those are zoning board hearings that are coming about. Any questions? I'm sorry, Adam.
No.
All right. There are a couple of applications and then there's minutes. And that's all I really know that we've got. So what I'm gonna do is going to try.
I tried to bring up the page on my phone, I can't even, it doesn't zoom in enough to read it on my phone, so.
Okay, yeah, I wouldn't try to do that, but.
Yeah.
Just let me know if you can see this.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
So here's what we've got for an application to the Board of Appeals. Location of property, 531 to 535 Washington Street. General business is the district. Proposed addition. And Melissa, if I go too fast, just tell me to slow down, I'll, I'll wait. If you need to catch up. I tend to ramble on a little bit, I apologize. Only owner's name, 531 Millie's LLC. Owner's address, PO Box 125 Whitman. When did you acquire this property, 2020? Has application been filed with Town Clerk? Yes. And again, Melissa, I'm just reading the application, so you can reference to that. That's much easier than trying to follow what I'm saying. Has any previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw which relief is requested, site plan approval. Reason for asking relief, build a 624 foot, square foot addition in the back of the building. Okay. I'm gonna try to zoom out of this a little bit if I can. Okay, so. This is Millie's. Across from McWiggins over by the town, town lot, you know, the church. So Millie's is the breakfast shop, ABC Sporting was up here. And they got a little bit of a bump out on the back. It looks like they're looking to build this addition out in the back. Okay. And if you look at Google Earth, I think there's a tree back there. Right at the moment, this area back here was a parking lot and it's actually been cleaned up and kind of enlarged a little bit. I think Rosen has done that work out there. It looked like something was torn down, but there was nothing out there before, but the, the way they're cleaning it up, it just looked like that. So they're looking to add this on. It would be a required requirement of the board to want to either say yea or nay, for whatever reason. Is no indication of any kind of hardship. The first issue I have is this is sketched up on a mortgage inspection plan. And if you're looking for site plan approval, you actually need a site plan per the rules and regs. So this plan application is a non-conforming plan. It's just their mortgage deed. They took the mortgage inspection, made a photocopy and marked it up. And a lot of people don't know that they need to actually hire a surveyor to draw it up. They probably figured, I'm just doing a square on the back, that's all I'm looking to do. But I know in our last meeting, we had conversation regarding people not submitting improper plans. So with that being said. Yeah, it's not. It's just for mortgage purposes, more than anything.
Houses next to it, driveways, anything, you're not even the street.
You're absolutely right. I mean, you should be showing driveways, butters. You know, a locust map needs to be on the plan so you can identify where in the town it is as opposed to going to Google Maps and punching in 531 Washington. So, I mean.
Would we also need no use for packing?
You don't know what it's being used for. There's the disadvantage to something like this. It could be used for storage, but the square footage of the building, if they're, if they're needing to use that for parking, they would have to then accommodate that. And that's where a site plan would identify how many parking spaces are needed. Are they, you know, street parking, you know, public parking that's gonna be utilized for it? Because there are parking spaces out in front of the space. There are parking spots along the side of the space, which I don't know agreements or anything like that. I think. Trying to remember. I want to say that Dennis, maybe Dennis Reagan might have owned it at one time. And he had some agreement on the parking that was over there, or he owned something across the street and he had an agreement for parking for tenants. I can't exactly remember what that was, but that went backwards. But nonetheless, this is an insufficient plan. You don't know the whole story as to what they're trying to accomplish with this. It's, it's very difficult to vote for it. But, you know, in the same sense, you, you don't know if they're trying to do something good there and they just don't understand, but. I'm gonna say, since, since Adam's gonna be chair, I'm gonna make a motion that we recommend a no vote. But I'm going to state that the applicant must obtain a copy of the rules and regulations for site plan approval. And we highly would recommend that the applicant hire a licensed surveyor to produce a sufficient site plan showing a butters, driveways, locust map, proper scaling, et cetera. When they bring this to the zoning board.
Maybe a big addition, 16 by 37.
Yeah, and I would say add to the end of that and provide an explanation what the addition would be used for. And that would be my motion. So Adam, what you would do here is you would ask anybody if they have any questions or comments. And then if there are none, you ask for a second.
Okay.
And then we go into a vote and with the, with a motion in a second, you'd have to do an individual head count because we're on Zoom just so you can identify who the person is that is voting in the affirmative and the negative or abstaining.
Okay. So we have Eric's motion. Does anybody have any questions or further comments?
I do, I do have one and maybe it's a very, very simple answer for whoever wants to answer it. Should we also recommend that they be clear with which section of relief they're looking for? They just said, we're gonna just build an addition in the back of the building. But which, which, which parts of the bylaw does it apply to specifically? I mean, obviously it's setback, it's very, very obvious, but.
Well, I mean, they, they didn't claim that. They just stated that, and I didn't mean to interrupt, but they just said site plan approval. So site plan approval is not looking for variance. They're just looking for approval to build this and use this.
Okay.
So is there a setback requirement? That is what gets into the hearing and, you know, Wayne and those guys would actually ask the question, you know. Because if I look at this, it's, you know, not 105.37. Is that the entire length here? I think it is.
Right.
So I'm not seeing any setback, so this is an insufficient plan altogether. So a site plan would identify general business, side setbacks are, rear setbacks are, the hardship is, you know, it's, it's a.
Yeah.
It's, what do you call them? It's all those row buildings that are all on top of each other.
Yeah. It'll also give us more measurements for different, for other corners and other ties. How far this, the, else, the, the, the part that bumps out in the back, how far is that back from the, from the plot line? We don't know.
It's not clear. I mean, my guess is, well, maybe it's. I'm gonna say you're probably about 35 feet from the back line, but that's me guessing.
Yeah.
At what is penciled in there.
Yeah.
For this, for the length of that addition. So, yeah, I think it's covered that if they were to, you know, properly provide a site plan, then that's when they would have to ask for relief, because now you start seeing, and you're starting to formulate this, oh, there is no side setback here. What is the side setback requirement? What's the rear setback? What do, you know, what is the use? What, what do I have to ask relief for if relief is required?
Yep.
And we could guess all day long, but we shouldn't be guessing.
Exactly.
Actually laid out for us.
So does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, definitely. Yeah.
Okay.
I have nothing else.
Anybody else, any other questions? Do we have a second to Eric's motion?
I'll second it.
All right. And.
It was seconded by Elaine.
Yep. Oh, go back, yep. I go around and approve it. Sheila?
Yes, I'm, I'm in favor.
Elaine?
In favor.
Eric?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor. Unanimous?
So Melissa, let me know when you're ready.
Good.
Okay. So this is the next application, Mr. Chairman, which is 340 Essex Street. Type of district is A2. It is an existing structure. Owner's name is James McDonald. Owner's address is 340 Essex. When did you acquire the property? 1982. Has application been filed with Town Clerk? Yes. Has previous appeal been made? Yes. Section of bylaw which relief is requested, Section 772, site plan approval. Section 554E1 variance. Reason for asking relief, owner wishes to open a small retail store and a portion of the existing commercial garage to sell cat and dog, dog and cat food. Sorry. And it's signed by the applicant. So let me try to rotate this so you're not all getting a sore neck. Rotate, rotate, rotate right under my nose, I know it is. Okay, so unlike the last application, this is an actual site plan that was generated. So here's the locust map and shows Essex Street, it shows the Rotary, Lyons Lane, Rayner Ave, Plymouth Street. Okay, so it gives you an idea where it is without calling up Google Maps. The MBTA tracks are right here. Right here, this is the right of way easement. There's paved access out in the back here by the storage. So what they're looking to do is utilize this space from what I can, oh, I'm sorry. Proposed dog and cat food store. So they're looking to use this space here, which this is a existing garage in a self-storage area. I don't know what else is going on in there, but they want to make a store here. So they're looking for site plan approval and they're looking for relief from Section 554E1. So my guess is they don't show sufficient parking for a store.
Yep.
Because, you know.
Well, how many? Yeah, so how many, how many, because it says store parking and parking spots three and four. Is that all they need for that small space? An employee and a, and a visitor?
Let's see.
What are they gonna need?
See. This is, sorry. Carl is usually good at putting in what the required parking spaces are and whatever information, but, I mean, they're showing five spots here. I was just thinking that they were part of the storage, but maybe they were adding them in. They could have done a better job to show the differentiation between all this. So maybe that is five spots for, you know, this store. It's not really clear, but now that you mention it, looking at it closer.
Are they looking to add on to this existing garage or just use the front of the existing garage?
Using the existing.
Okay.
Part of the garage.
You just want to use the part of the garage for a store?
Yep, they just want to make a store there.
And do we assume the garage is only for parking vehicles? Because the E1 variant says there can't be any manufacturing or assembly on site.
E1, so there, if he's asking for a relief of manufacturing, that doesn't make sense.
Listen, plan a bag in their own food there or something?
Well, the, the number he referred to was 5-4E1.
Yeah.
And that reads as the small store selling, you know, in a current building. But it also has a, the E1 is no manufacturing or assembly on site.
They want to assemble their own bags with food.
Well. Yeah, I don't know unless he got it wrong. Maybe he grabbed the first thing he saw and continued it, but I mean, he's looking for a small retail store.
Which is E1.
E1, he's gonna need the parking, which appears as. E1, he's going to need the parking, which appears that he's calling out for five spots to be down there. Which, as anybody knows, will be three or four cars parking down here if he's busy. Or people will park around the corner. It's something he would have to police or, you know, do what he needs to do there.
I think he picked the right thing, it's just that particular line goes on to say that everything has to be inside the building unless it's a nursery or agricultural supply place, and it must, and provided there is no manufacturing or assembly on the premises. It's all part of the one.
I mean, the only thing, if he's doing any maintenance on cars, but, you know, that could be assembly, but he's not asking for the existing garage, whatever is there is being done, he's just asking for the store. So I don't know.
So my only question is like, what was existing for parking before and what is it proposed right now? Just because I'm looking at, there's a small building, it's so hard to read, my eyes are distracted by all the hatching. But the small building, right way to cursor is, it says existing office and apartment thing.
So you need to have. Right.
So, you know, there could be several parking spots for that, and then, you know, the employees, I don't think they're going to need a whole ton for pulling up for storage, because you just kind of pull up to your space and do your thing. So I kind of want to, you know, I don't see an issue with this personally. Maybe my motion, if anybody doesn't have any more questions, but my motion would be motion for approval, but double check the parking situation to get more of a story as to what was what's existing and what's proposed.
So I would guess that, what would you say that your motion would be? Motion for approval, provided sufficient parking does not take away from the existing use of the existing structures around it.
Yep.
And is not more detrimental to the space.
Yeah.
I mean, I think. Okay, I would say, yeah.
You got to stick around because you just take the words right out of my mouth and take it fancy. You know what I want to say, you just make it fancy.
You know what you want to say. All right, Mr. Chair, what do you get to say?
No, I agree with Sheila, motion, do they have any other questions?
Nope.
No, do I have a second on Sheila's motion?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, Sheila?
In favor.
Elaine?
In favor.
Eric?
In favor.
I'm in favor also. There should be a problem, as long as there's overlapping use to the parking, they should have no issue.
Yeah, you can't make it more detrimental for the existing condition, so. Yeah, absolutely. I guess.
Forming, I might have to remember those words.
The next thing that I think we have, and it's the last thing unless we have other business, that would be the minutes of the 22nd. Elaine, Sheila, Lonnie and myself were present.
Yeah, I was not.
So what ends up happening here is only those who are present can vote on it. Adam, you would have to abstain.
Yep.
And you just have to announce that as you vote, so.
Okay. Does everyone else have the minutes, any questions or anything? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, motion by Elaine, second?
And I'll second it, let's just see, I'll second it.
All right, so go through, Eric, you approve?
I approve.
All right, Elaine?
In favor.
Sheila?
In favor.
And I abstain.
Okay, so it passes.
All right. I'll be more prepared next time, since now I know.
You did just fine, Adam.
Well, we'll figure it out, I'm going to need help, but we'll get through it.
It just takes a little bit of time to get comfortable with it, but you'll be fine.
We'll make it work.
What I would recommend is, you've got the Planning Board rules and regulations. Probably read through it, you know, give yourself a little familiarity, or at least bookmark some places in it so that, you know, if you have something that comes up and someone wants to subdivide a lot and the zoning board approved it, you know. They'll come in and say, oh, it's only one lot, I only have to pay you for one lot, but no, you're creating two, so there's two lots to have to be paid for, and you can find that in the, in the rules and regulations. So there's things like that that will come up and, you know, worse comes to worse. You know, if someone comes before the board and you can't find it and you feel a little frazzled trying to find it, so you know what, I need to get back to you on it. And, you know, Mary would be able to tell you what it is, because she remembers the prices, she was really good at that. Melissa's got to catch up on that, but that'll be in time, Mary was doing it for a very long time. But, you know, all the, all the information is available and if you have it bookmarked or earmarked, you should be able to work your way through it. Like I said, I'll be at the next meeting anyway. I'm here until the 30th. It will be a matter of whether you guys vote to have the meeting before Thanksgiving. Which that would be.
You'll be here the 30th of November or the 30th of October?
November.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
So.
Adam's sweating, I was watching the seeds of sweat.
So, yeah, I submitted my notice this morning because of what's going on, and, you know, if my situation changes, you know, it doesn't mean I have to run out the door, so, you know, if, if for some reason the sale falls through and I am here until December or January, you know, I'll be in some more meetings. I'll keep everybody up to date on what's going on, but as of right now, you know, it's looking like it'll be the 30th is when I close. The day that I close, I will be vacated, so, you know, it's going to be tough because Thanksgiving. And I know a lot of times we don't have the meeting on that week because of Thanksgiving. But usually people have travel plans and this year is going to be a whole new Thanksgiving. So who knows what's going to happen? But that's, that's up to, you know, everybody has to, what they want to vote on as far as that goes, but you know, let's see what happens there.
So our next meeting is what, the 27th? Of October?
The, yeah, it's the second and fourth, so.
Just making sure.
Oh, wait, today, yeah, today's, yep, today's the 13th, and then it'll be the 27th.
All right.
And then so there is no other business that I'm aware of unless, Adam, if you had anything, I don't know.
No, nope. No, Lonnie to make our final motion.
So when you do a motion to adjourn, it's all, it's all good, there is no discussion on it. You just go to the second. You can't discuss an adjournment, it's something of the Robert's rules. I don't know what it is, but you just can't do it.
All right.
But nonetheless, I will make a motion to adjourn.
You will, okay.
But I have a question, no, I'm just kidding. Yeah, I'll second it.
All right. Do we have to go do a roll call on the adjournment?
We do, we absolutely do. I'm in favor.
Elaine?
In favor.
Sheila?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. All right.